The law is designed to take care of potentially vulnerable situations like that. And they call it an emergency.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Sherrill.
All right. I'll expect some regards, but we'll be talking again. Thank you.
Anybody else in the public? We're going to move to the resolutions. Resolution number one is authorizing the mayor to sign the following agreement. I need to ask the attorney, how do we encapsulate this?
Mayor, this is an agreement between the village of Tuckahoe and Allen Riddell Consultants. In summary, what this agreement would do, it would allow Allen Riddell Consultants access to the village's telephone bills in order, in an effort for them to audit the savings. What I've asked Allen Riddell for, and I've been working with Steve, the village treasurer, on this as well, who's been of great help, is that the consultants are going to provide us with a scope of services that we're going to attach to the agreement, as well as a fee schedule as well that would be distributed to the board. But the way that this consultant works, it's my understanding, is that they work on a contingency basis whereby they get a percentage of the savings.
This comes at the recommendation of our treasurer, correct?
That's correct, Mayor.
He's also indicating yes from the audience. Okay, do I have a motion to allow the signing of this agreement?
Some of them.
A second?
Second.
Discussion?
Just one thing. Basically, this doesn't cost us anything, because whatever they say, they're going to take a slice of that. So it's a win-win.
Right. If I can just say, this is a vendor that we've dealt with in the past, and we've had signed contracts with them. And they have approached me once again, saying that they feel that we may be paying for additional telephone lines that we are not actually using. So they want to come in here and do an analysis, and then whatever they do find, whatever the savings is, they're going to take a certain percentage of that.
All right. Thank you.
Like a telephone bill, sir, share.
Yeah. Any other discussion? Roll call?
Trustee Ecklin.
In favor?
Trustee Gorman.
In favor.
Trustee Zaki.
In favor.
In favor. Resolution number two is for payment of vouchers in the amount of $416,628.85, consisting of abstract 22 for $112,172.86, abstract 23 for $178,483.28, and abstract 25 for $125,972.71. The largest paid items here is $108,000 to Vernon Hills Contracting. That's the final bill for the Circuit Avenue Park renovation and improvement. $89,934.89 is our health insurance premium for the month of December. And $55,000 to Core Contracting of New York for paving project. $22,950 to O'Connor, Davies, Muntz. That's our independent audit of village financials for the fiscal year ending 5/31/07. Do I have a motion?
Some of them.
A second?
Second.
Discussion?
Trustee Ecklin.
In favor?
Trustee Gorman.
In favor.
Trustee Zaki.
In favor.
Mayor of Patrache.
In favor. Resolution number three is authorizing village clerk Susan Schamar to sign off on the purchases and other related matters of the Department of Public Works as of November 5th, 2007. Do I have a motion?
Some of them.
Second?
Second.
Discussion here. We are obviously still without our GPW chief, but we have regular housekeeping bills that come in monthly. We just wanted to put somebody officially on record as being signing to make sure that there was some oversight from the Department of DPW. So we've asked the clerk's office to have all bills forwarded through her office for an okay. Anything else? Roll call?
Trustee Ecklin.
In favor.
Trustee Gorman.
In favor.
Trustee Zaki.
In favor.
Mayor of Patrache.
In favor. Resolution number four is my rat problem at the train station's resolution again that we didn't move last month. Authorizing me to sign the service agreement with KEB Pest Control of Yonkers for the exterior road and control of the areas of the Tuckahoe Train Station, the Crestwood Train Station, and the DPW at a cost of $225 per month. Do I have a motion?
Some of them.
A second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call?
Trustee Ecklin.
Pardon me, in favor?
Trustee Gorman.
In favor.
Trustee Zaki.
In favor.
Mayor of Patrache.
In favor. Resolution number five is authorizing to sell for scrap the following pieces of DPW Works vehicles and equipment. A '91 Chevy pickup truck with no rear body, VIN number 1GCEK14HME136646. Number two, a 1974 American Roads leaf collector, and that's VIN number AC04138, and a giant vac leaf collector, VIN number 265016. Do I have a motion?
Some of them.
A second?
Second.
Discussion?
Somebody mentioned that this has to be, to have to be sold, or they have to be...I'm willing to scrap these.
That's what we moved this to. We moved this to scrap. It was originally, we were going to...
It's going to be sold as scrap.
Yes, it's going to be sold as scrap.
Okay.
We were going to, we were going to originally bid it for sale, and then we realized that the floor in it. The leaf collector is of no use at all. It's a big empty box. So the, we've been informed that for scrap metal purposes, we'll get our most money here. So that's where we've moved to sell this and authorizing us to sell directly for scrap, as opposed to the last times when, and I, you know, Trustee Zaki and Trustee Ecklin and all of us, we, we spent $300 to sell a car that we got $50 for with sending it out. So we've determined that we're not going to make that same mistake with this big pile of junk.
Scrap.
Right. Do I have any other discussion? Roll call?
Trustee Ecklin.
In favor.
Trustee Gorman.
In favor.
Trustee Zaki.
In favor.
Mayor of Patrache.
In favor. Resolution number six is to accept the proposal of national construction rentals in the amount of $2,500 for the installation of a temporary fence to be installed around the perimeter of the DPW property upon the removal of the existing building that we have. Do I have a motion?
Some of them.
A second?
Second.
Discussion? This will be going up when, when the building comes down, not before that, and it'll be temporary.
And I, it actually may be a little less than $2,500. Do we need to change that at all, or, I mean, just to say maybe to an amount not to exceed...
We could say in an amount not to exceed $2,500.
Okay.
Okay, so then I'll read this, all right? You read this.
Oh, we could just let the record reflect that. Resolution number six shall read in an amount not to exceed $2,500.
Perfect. Roll call?
Trustee Ecklin.
In favor.
Trustee Gorman.
In favor.
In favor.
Mayor of Patrache.
In favor. Resolution number seven is authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with Enable, E-Nable, Business Solutions for the purpose of inventory of the village's computer network for a sum of $750. The project includes taking full inventory of the village's Tuckahoe's computer network consisting of a collection of data for servers, routers, switches, wide area network, desktops, printers, faxers, copiers, provide a network diagram, and recommend, recommendations document based on the industry's best practices. Four proposals were cited and received. Three were fixed amounts ranging from $750 to $1,000. One as an amount based on the cost per unit would have calculated well over $1,000. Do I have a motion?
Some of them.
A second?
Second.
Discussion? This is another piece out of the treasurer's office. We have something that'll be moving, we'll be moving on in the next resolution, which is a new, for the police department, which has crashed on us several times. We needed to take a true inventory of what's going on with all of our equipment as we move forward, because some of the equipment is outdated in the, in the computer area, the IT-specific area. We have a general practice where we, I can't remember what the number is, is it $200 an hour, $125 an hour? What is the contract number? You can just tell me.
$125.
$125 an hour. So if a computer goes down here, we, the tech comes in, it's a, it's a state contract that we have, but the tech service is in at $125 an hour. We have, we've had crashes of servers and individual computers that have been in excess of over 20 hours of people's time to get them back up, because there's critical information on them. So in addition to what's moving forward on the next resolution, we are also looking to look at the entire picture of our IT needs and use here. So, roll call?
Trustee Ecklin.
In favor.
Trustee Gorman.
In favor.
Trustee Zaki.
In favor.
Mayor of Patrache.
In favor. Resolution number eight is authorizing the purchase of an HB, HP computer network server and associated services provided by Dynatech Services, Inc. in the amount not to exceed $24,000 for the police department. All purchases will be made using the New York State Office of General Services procurement contracts. Do I have a motion?
Some of them.
A second?
Second.
Discussion? This is what I was just talking about, and Dynatech is the company that we also have our service contract with, and these are the people that we, they're, they're another state provider.
Trustee Ecklin.
In favor.
Trustee Gorman.
In favor.
Trustee Zaki.
In favor.
Mayor of Patrache.
In favor. We already did resolution number nine. We're going to move to resolution number 10. Resolution number nine, for those that don't remember, was the appointment to Detective, Detective Andrea Pinto. Resolution number 10 is to authorize two temporary banners for the Thomas Stone Restaurant for the period of 30 days, beginning December 11th, ending January 9th. So I have a motion?
Some of them.
A second?
Second.
Discussion?
Trustee Ecklin.
In favor.
Trustee Gorman.
In favor.
Trustee Zaki.
In favor.
Mayor of Patrache.
In favor. Resolution number 11 is authorizing to hire seasonal help to conduct an inventory of the treasurer's office for the period of one to two weeks. Do I have a motion?
Some of them.
A second?
Second.
Discussion?
Trustee Ecklin.
I, hold on one sec. I just want to let everybody know what we're doing here. The, we've had several treasurers here in, in, I don't know how many years, before Sergio...
Yeah.
All right.
Tommy Solakami, yeah.
And, yes, and in, in our current treasurer's office, Steve Pupora, it's filled with files. Some of them are relevant, some of them are irrelevant. They're around from a long time beforehand. I go in his office, he's surrounded by piles of paperwork in there at any moment of the day, as we all do when we go in to see what's going on. And we need to really get some of that inventory, get some of that out of the way, so that we can make room for the future of, of what's going on inside the treasurer's department in an efficient manner. And so we're going to, he's looking to bring in a tent for, you know, a week or two here to get this college student.
Is this enough time?
One or two weeks? He thinks he can get it done in one or two weeks.
We'll save the hell.
All right. Now you're looking like we're extending him more than one or two weeks. We're not. He just got one or two weeks to get this taken care of. So good luck, treasurer. Roll call?
Trustee Ecklin.
In favor.
Trustee Gorman.
In favor.
Trustee Zaki.
In favor.
Mayor of Patrache.
In favor. Resolution number 12 is to accept the proposal of Peter Landy to replace a decorative light pole and fixture at Sagamaw with labor material as necessary. This pole was damaged as, due to an accident that occurred at the location, and it needs to be replaced. A check to cover the replacement was received from the insured, from the insured's insurance company. The three proposals we received ranged from $5,800 to $6,500. I think we're, we're accepting the $5,800 at, at Landy. Do I have a motion?
Some of them.
A second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call?
Trustee Ecklin.
In favor.
Trustee Gorman.
In favor.
Trustee Zaki.
In favor.
Mayor of Patrache.
In favor. Resolution number 13, to accept the donation of the General Russo Pope Foundation in the amount of $55,000. This donation was to pay expenses associated with the Winterfest event that was held this last Saturday, Sunday, December 9th, also Crestwood Holiday Fest event on Saturday, December 15th, as well as holiday decorations that were put up for the events and through the community, and police barricades that we've ordered. So, do I have a motion?
Some of them.
A second?
Second. Thank you, David.
Discussion?
Yes, thank you, David.
Yes, we're, we're always appreciative. They're an excellent benefactor to the community, and we were all out there this weekend. We'll be thanking those people that did their thing during the next portion. So, roll call?
Trustee Ecklin.
In favor.
Trustee Gorman.
In favor.
Trustee Zaki.
In favor.
Mayor of Patrache.
In favor. Resolution number 14 is in support of a town, of the town board on the application of the town of Eastchester, the village of Bronxville, and the village of Tuckahoe for the State of New York Department of State Shared Services Municipal Incentive Grant, program for the purchase of two things: an anti-icing salt brine mixing system and application vehicle. Costs salt brine equipment $40,000, application vehicle $3, at $60,000 a vehicle, $180,000. Grant request $198,000. A front-end loader, total cost $160,000. Grant request $144,000. By grant requirements, the town and the villagers will share the 10% match, each municipality paying 3.3% of this. Do I have a motion?
Some of them.
A second?
Second.
Discussion? If, if I could tell you what the anti-icing salt brine mixing system is, I would be making it up. I sat with the DPW chiefs of Bronxville and Eastchester, and the Bronxville DPW chief has been working with this. He's kind of made his own machine down there. It's, it's some sort of product that'll work on our streets. It's less invasive than what we currently use on our streets, and he made this homemade version of the whole thing over there some. And they're looking, because there, there's real money available to, to put this to use through the entire community. So that's what this would do. We would have this place, it would all be made in one place, and then we'd be distributing that. It might be some alternative that we can be using to, to dissolve, it's very corrosive and things of that nature. And the front end loader, that's kind of self-explanatory. Roll call?
Trustee Ecklin.
In favor.
Trustee Gorman.
In favor.
Trustee Zaki.
In favor.
Mayor of Patrache.
In favor. Resolution number 15 is to approve one temporary vinyl banner sign for Sin Lawn of 73 Main Street for a period of 30 days, beginning December 11th and ending, ending January 9th. Do I have a motion?
Some of them.
A second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call?
Trustee Ecklin.
In favor.
Trustee Gorman.
In favor.
Trustee Zaki.
In favor.
Mayor of Patrache.
In favor. On that particular company, that's one of our new people that has moved onto Main Street, Sin Lawn. They're a synthetic lawn people, okay? And we're glad that the store has, has been, has been rented. It's, it's been for sale, for rent sign in our community for a long time. It's almost one of the things that, you know, we all talk about all the time, that this particular store, we're always hoping that it gets rented. They, they proposed an interesting question to me today, and I figure I'll bring it up to all of you right now. They have a tree pit in front of their spot that's filled with dirt, that, that's filled with dirt and rocks and cigarette butts and things. They're asking us also if they can put some sin, sin lawn around their little tree pit there in front of their store. And I said that I'll, I don't know if we're going to need to vote on it at some point in time or anything, but I, we can have our attorney look at it, whether we'll be creating some kind of problem there or not. What do you think?
The only thing I would be concerned about is, and I imagine that it, it's, lawn doesn't create any kind of tripping hazard or any kind of slippery hazard if it gets wet.
I think it's like AstroTurf, almost.
That's what I'm told to, yeah.
Which gets fairly slippery in the rain. So that's the only question I would have. Maybe something to look at over DPW as well.
I can't imagine that the dirt and rocks that are in there are any less tripping hazard to the public. I bet, just my personal...
Would they put it in every, in every tree pit up in town?
Although they offered, and then they said they'd certainly like to start with the one right outside their store. And I, I said that I'll, I'll run it past everybody, and we can have a conversation on it. But it's just when I saw that temporary banner thing here, it just reminded me that again. So we'll, we'll move forward on that, all right? Okay, at this point, we have approval of the minutes. Approval of the minutes of the regular board meeting of November 5th, 2007. Do I have a motion?
Some of them.
A second?
Second.
And any discussion? Roll call?
Trustee Ecklin.
In favor.
Trustee Gorman.
In favor.
Trustee Zaki.
In favor.
Mayor of Patrache.
In favor. And then approval of the minutes of the regular board meeting of November 26, 2007. Do I have a motion?
Some of them.
A second?
Second.
Discussion?
I just want to remind people, we do have the minutes now on the website. So as soon as they get approved, I put them on. So probably we'll see them there tomorrow.
That's very good. Thank you. It's one of the things we've been working on. We're getting the, the planning board zoning, but they'll have to be waiting 30 days till after approval, because there's some legal issues that go there. So that's what will be happening there. Roll call?
Trustee Ecklin.
In favor.
Trustee Gorman.
In favor.
Trustee Zaki.
In favor.
Mayor of Patrache.
In favor. At this point, I'd like to bring up Chief Costanzo. Our reports from the police chief.
Good evening. I just have a few announcements to make. One is to remind residents of the winter parking regulations throughout the village. The maintenance crew is installing the snow zone signs that are pulling up in various parts, streets that have been affected over the years. There's no parking on these streets during the period when the snow falls, first begins to fall, and ending 12 hours after the snow ceases to fall. So those signs are being, currently being installed. Most of them have been up, put up already. The other regulation is throughout the business districts of the village, the no parking 3:00 AM to 6:00 AM. That becomes effective December 15th, and it runs through March 1st. And we will be issuing warning tickets for those violations the first three days, so the 15th through the 18th. And again, there are still some streets that are no parking December 15th to March 1st, and those are self-explanatory. And again, we'll be issuing warning tickets. And then lastly, the alternate side of the street parking regulations are suspended during the winter months. Those signs are being, again, being turned around. So as we get to those streets, you'll see that those, those regulations are going to be eased up, and we'll, we'll turn the, those street signs again in the spring, for, for the sweeper to come out in the, in the springtime, and we'll make announcements at that time. I just want to thank the board for making the appointment this evening of Detective Andrea Pinto. Her appointment was to replace Detective Lou Suarez. Detective Suarez served the village for 32 years. He was the first Spanish-speaking officer that this village had, and back in 1975, that was a, was pretty unique for this whole area. And, and he's been an asset to this village, and for, for all of Westchester County, for that matter. He was called out many times to other jurisdictions to interpret early on. I mean, now it's, it's pretty common to have Spanish-speaking officers within the ranks of the department, but back in the early days, that wasn't the case. And Lou was, served in that capacity and, and served this village well for many, many years. He was one of the most decorated officers that this village has, has ever seen, receiving many accolades throughout the county. He was a past recipient of the Westchester County Detective Association Detective of the Year. He was a past president of that association. And again, he served as a detective for over 14 years. So on behalf of the whole, the police department, I want to wish Lou lots of luck in his retirement. He really had a very distinguished career here, and we wish him the best.
We certainly want to echo that. We, we're sorry to see Detective Suarez move on, but that's just where he's done, right? He's moved into something else where we know he'll be successful, and we, he put a great deal of time in here in the community, and we're grateful for that.
Thank you. Friday, December 14th, the police department will be having their annual Christmas party for children, nine years, nine and years of age and under. It will be at the Tuckahoe Community Center from 4:00 PM to 6:00 PM. Of course, Santa Claus will make an appearance. We have gifts for all the children who attend. It's a great function. It's sponsored by the Tuckahoe Police Organization. I think the police department's been doing this for about 35 years now, so it's really a wonderful event, something we all look forward to. And just lastly, with the holiday season upon us, I just certainly want to wish all of our residents a very happy holidays and a happy new year, but I just wish, want them to have a safe holiday season. The police department will be joining other law enforcement in, in strictly enforcing the driving while intoxicated laws will be out in force. So we certainly want everyone to have an enjoyable holiday season, but please be careful, drive safely. And with that, happy holidays to the entire board and to the entire village.
Same to you, chief. We had it, we had it, I forwarded a complaint on the snow sign thing to your office. I got one in my office today, so I, I copied it down to your office. There's somebody saying that they feel we should reexamine one specific area. I sent back that we will re, you know, we'll, we'll look at whether there's any merit to that. So I'll be looking for your input as well. And, and we also just sent out a reminder to the parking lots of our community that they're not allowed to throw their snow out into the middle of the street. The chief's force will be also effectively making sure that that is, is done, because occasionally we have some of these Mount Kilimanjaro's in front of some of these parking lots. They push them out into the middle of the street here, and it's against the law, and we will be making sure that we completely enforce that law, as always this year. So they've been duly notified. Most of them are not village residents, though, here. So it's really for the village residents that I'm letting them know that we're, we are enforcing, you know, we're out in strict enforcement of that this summer, this winter as well. All right? Thanks, chief.
Chief, may I ask you one thing? Are we going to do the free holiday parking in the business districts like we normally do? Is that?
Yes, well, that's certainly at the board's pleasure.
And I kind of remember we had-
Don't we have to do it by resolution?
By resolution.
So if we're going to do it, we should do it now?
Yeah.
I only thought about it when you started talking on some of the other items.
That's a good point. I didn't realize that the board wouldn't be meeting before the holiday season. So it's generally the week of the Christmas holiday. So I know that 25th is a Tuesday, Christmas Day is on Tuesdays, so you may want to look through that, look from the Saturday before through that Friday.
23rd? I'm sorry, 22nd.
22nd.
And then we do it through New Year's Day, or?
No. We generally do it during that week. So I would say it would go through, actually, it usually ends on Christmas Day, so maybe, maybe Thursday's when you want to end it. I'm sorry, Tues-.
When?
We could end it Tuesday, because the meters aren't effective Tuesday anyway. So if you want to start it a couple of days before the Saturday, you know, so I'm getting all mixed up.
Yeah, that's a good idea. What's the date?
Like Thursday?
Yeah, give me the date. Everybody has to think really hard to get six days-
Steve's got his palm.
Probably about the 20th.
20th?
The 20th.
Yeah, I think that's right.
Thursday, the 20th through?
The 25th.
December 25th, okay. Anything else for the chief? We'll move this resolution after he's done.
The only thing, I want to just make a quick comment on that. It's always a good thing for our businesses to promote shopping in the village when we do these free parking. However, we will strictly enforce the two-hour limit, or if it's a one-hour, half-hour meter that usually is posted on, only because the merchants also need a turnover, and if we don't enforce it, sometimes people go down to see a holiday show, or to look at the tree, take the train into the city and park in front of someone's business all day, and it kind of defeats the purpose. So although we are giving free parking to shoppers, and we certainly want to promote, you know, shopping in the business districts, we want to warn all of our residents that we will restrict the, whatever limits are appropriate to that particular meter.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you, chief.
All right, let's take care of that business right away here. We need a resolution authorizing the police department, is it to authorize the police department?
Yes.
To waive the parking meter fees in the business district for the Christmas week, December 20th through December 25th.
In the Depot Square and-
Both business districts, yeah. Both business districts.
Both business districts.
That's hard to say. That's fine, the resolution as read is fine. Do I have a motion?
Some will.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? Rock call.
In favor.
Trustee Gorman?
In favor.
Trustee Zaki?
In favor.
In favor. Miscellaneous business, we have, the Crestwood Holiday Fest is Saturday, December 15th, from 11:00 to 3:00. Holiday music, live reindeer and more. Village offices will be closed at noon on December 24th in observance of Christmas holiday, reopen on December 26th. Village offices will also be closed on Tuesday, January 1st, in observance of the New Year holiday. At this time, Trustee Ackland, do you have anything you'd like to report on?
Yes, I just have two very brief items. I would like to thank Assemblywoman Amy Paulin for securing a $100,000 grant towards installing an emergency generator down at our community center. I spoke to Bill Williams, our facilities director, earlier today, and I asked him to do a little research on this, as to whether or not the generator is on the New York State Office of General Services state contract. If it is, then we would actually purchase the generator itself, which is going to be a natural gas generator. He's told me that it's going to have an enclosure. It'll be installed behind the community center, between the community center and Metro North's railroad tracks. And if it's not on that contract, then I'll certainly be asking at the next meeting or the meeting after, a resolution for us to go out to bid for not only the procurement of that item, as well as for putting a bid out for the contract to do the installation. So I want to certainly thank her for that. It's going to be well needed.
Yeah, Trustee Ackland, thanks, you know, that Amy Paulin's office gave us this $100,000. This money will ensure that we can take the community center and turn it into a heating and a cooling facility for not just seniors. Amy Paulin and I, the Assemblywoman, were at the community center just recently when she was, you know, having a few photos taken, and she wanted to make sure that, she's let everybody know, it's that this building, which serves for so many purposes here, for good end, you know, we have our holiday celebrations here, we have the kids there, and in the event that there is ever an emergency in our community, she was looking to make sure that when we, when we asked, that we would be able to provide a shelter for the community, for heating, for cooling, for seniors, for young people, for anybody that would need it at those kind of emergencies, flooding. We had flooding this year, and we had 10 families that were displaced. What this place has, the community center that other places here, Village Hall doesn't have, there's still a lot of criteria to making it a heating center, and an emergency center, but it does have bathroom facilities, it does have a kitchen, it has an enormous amount of space. An emergency generator there will really be an essential for our community.
There might be a possibility that we could buy a power in there, too, so I was going to take a look at that with-
Excellent.
-with Bill as well. And if we could, then we would actually have some status there to have it as a full-service emergency.
And that's, that's a key to the community, to have that kind of availability.
So I certainly want to thank her for that. And I just want to mention that last week, I actually met here, right here in this room, with Trustee Gorman and Zaki, and we met with the Boy Scouts, and we had a wonderful meeting with them. They were working on their citizenship and community, in the community merit badges. And I'll tell you, these gentlemen, fine gentlemen, they brought up some really wonderful questions. They challenged all of us, I would say. They were instructed to view one of our board meetings, and they viewed the last meeting, which was a little bit dry, because it contained mostly information about our sign ordinance. But I was quite surprised at how they really took us to task on some of the items that were in our new sign ordinance. So they did a very good job, so I was really pleased.
And they actually were paying attention.
They sure were, I'll tell you. And that's it. And happy holidays to everyone in our fine village.
Thank you. Trustee Zaki?
A couple of small things. The DPW, we had three interviews for a new superintendent, and that's all done right now. We just have to appoint one of them. And we also extended the leaf pickup for a while until we get all these leaves picked up. I think that's a great idea. And then the planning board, 100 Main Street, Salerno's, and the old Coca-Cola building, and the 76th Main Street, a sign. Union Place, this is, Union Place, there's going to be a Juma project going on there, and there's another extension for site plan approval of that. And the planning meeting is on the 17th of November, 17th of December, at 8:00. And the workshop is on the 11th at 7:00. Both meetings will be in Village Hall. The zoning board has two items on the agenda. The meeting will be, take place Wednesday, December 12th, at 8:00. That's about Salerno's property on 100 Main Street, and the RV property down on Middle Avenue and Main Street. December 12th, Frank Sinatra's birthday, in case anybody's interested. Thank you. Thank you.
I didn't know that. Thank you, Ernie. I mean, thank you, Trustee Zaki, for that tidbit of information. Trustee Gorman?
Okay, first, the library. I ran over there tonight, they had their meeting. They have a couple of openings still for the holiday song and poetry with concordia this Wednesday, and also on the 27th, their storytime stage for 8:00 through 6:00 at 11:00, holiday program. But you must call and register, 961-2121. Also, they're still running their giving tree, which the idea is to buy a book in someone's honor, and they will put a name plate, a plate in the book, a book plate with the name of the person you're honoring, and it will be in the library for many, many, many years. They started out with 30 books, and all 30, which was great, and so they actually had to add to their list. So it's a very successful program.
It was. I stopped, I bought one. I tried to buy one of the $2.99 Curious George Goes on a Picnic, but I got shaken down for a $35 something. But it's in honor of a member of my family that I truly loved, so it was worthy, anyway.
Also, Tuckahoe Housing Authority will have a new executive director as of Saturday. They approved the hiring of Irina, now this is tough, Irina Magvisky, and she will be taking over in January. They'll be staying around till the end of January at some point, helping her to make a easy transition. So we welcome-
We're almost at the end of his 20 weeks. As a liaison to them and advisor to that board.
The next Housing Authority meeting is on Tuesday, December 18th. Also, the, also on the 18th is the senior luncheon at the Davenport Tuckahoe Seniors, which is always a lovely event. And the last thing is, today we had another packing of boxes for Campuka. Today was an enormous amount. I think we sent off, we're sending off about 16 boxes tomorrow morning, they'll go out. Frank Morgenthau was here. We also want to thank Senator Klein. He paid for this shipment, as well as the last shipment. And we have a nonprecedent amount of things coming in, so we're actually going to be doing three shipments this month. So I want to thank Senator Klein for that, and also, I want to thank Phyllis Rothschild from Eastchester High School. She did an enormous collection with her kids, and that's part of what we sent today for our Tuckahoe senior citizens. They also did a collection, and it's just, I'm just astounded at the generosity, it just keeps on going. But I got a letter from someone, and this was from a woman named Jean Ballasadis, and she's from Eastchester, and she and a friend of hers had called about doing something for Campuka, and she wrote, "I would like you to know that these care boxes, they delivered these, were the troops, were made with love by 13 five-year-old girls and two boys, six and three. This was part of Christine Ballasadis's five-year-old birthday party. The children wanted to do something fun for someone else, and the project was very reward for all of us. Ashley and Casey Miranda, community volunteers at Eastchester's Middle, are helping the children with this project. The children thanked them all for their hard work. These boxes are meant for our military men and women serving our country and away from home. They have been left unsealed so they can be inspected for safety reasons. We are so thrilled that you have a program ongoing to assist in sending our good wishes and care packages to the military. Thank you so much, and all those involved." And they said, "Please let, please let us know if there's anything else we can do." But this is a great idea for a birthday party, and not only having the children have fun and get something, but they're also giving, which was great. And the boxes were beautiful, and they had a great time, so I'm just amazed at the generosity that's happening.
Well, I think that, you know, through the holiday time, I think that obviously the troops are more in everybody's mind as they're away from their families, but certainly Tuckahoe and the village, DPW, VFW, and the American Legion people, they have not let it be forgotten at all, no matter what time of the year it is, once this, we took this up, it's been really something that Trustee Gorman has made sure has stayed alive here in the village since we've started, and they funded all of the postage for that today. Senator Klein funded the postage, which is grateful. They're trying to get more people to fund the postage to this, so that we don't put the burden completely on the VFW and the American Legion post, since they've been graciously sending them out every month. So we'll be looking for other people to step forward and take, take a month and pay the postage for this, so if you're out there-
Keep the things coming.
And keep the things, yes. We certainly keep looking for the contributions.
Yeah. My nephew actually is in Crete right now on his way back to England, but he left, gave us all the contact information, so we keep him in Campuka. Also, I wanted to also acknowledge the program that occurred at Tuckahoe High School on Friday morning in honor of Pearl Harbor Day. It was, it was a wonderful event attended by veterans, all through, and it was very well-
That event is to try and make sure that as more and more people we move past those, those days, the anniversary of those days, that they, that the children in the schools still are fresh with the memories of people that were living through it, and they read some of the recollections of those that lived through it, the veterans come, and it's in order to keep, make sure that our youth today remember what's transpired in our, in our own country in the past. So it is a good day. Anything else? I have, very briefly, a couple of things. I just, obviously, we just had the Winter Fest on Friday, I mean, on Saturday night and on Sunday, we had DPW workers out there. This year, we had a real push to make sure that we tried not to affect the businesses while we had the event with the parking, and everybody was really helpful with that. I obviously have to thank the DPW and the police department, who worked all weekend there. I mean, it was an enormous amount of work. And our village clerk, Sweet Chamarra, who keeps informing me that she's not going to be doing it next year, that she's going to go away to Florida or something on it, but I don't really think I'm letting that happen. And obviously, the prime benefactor, the General Support Foundation and David Pope, we need to thank them again. It was another wonderful evening. Unfortunately for the DPW department, though, the rain held off right till the end, so that they had to do the entire removal of everything in the rain. But it was good for the publics, for the public state, because they were able to be there all day and enjoy it with the threat of rain all day that didn't really occur. And there didn't seem to be any disasters that happened there. It was good, Santa was there. Former Mayor White was Santa for an hour, then-
I want to thank the beautification group who came out and really worked very hard and gave several hours of their time to help with the photos.
I was going to get to the beautification committee. I know you're a member of the beautification committee. You're insinuating that I would have left them off my list? They're on my list here.
No, but I would like to say-
Okay. And I echo those words.
And also, the highway department did work very hard in turning the square into a winter wonderland. It's really, you know, they worked hard, and they did a great job, and they have to be commended.
And as I was saying, I wanted to thank former Mayor White, who showed up as Santa Claus there for a couple of hours, and David, Sergeant Bank, who showed up for a couple hours.
Frank DeMarco.
Frank DeMarco was there for a couple of hours as Santa Claus.
He was at Ed Birdie's.
And Ed Birdie came in on the fire truck on Saturday night as Santa Claus. So we had a whole bunch of those people, I need to thank them as well. The elves, I need to thank the elves. There were some there as community service people. It's a good day. I appreciate everybody showing up for it, and I need to remind them that the Holiday Fest in Crestwood takes place this Saturday.
Yes, from 11 to 3:00, there'll be holiday music, live reindeer, so please to come and support the event and bring your children.
Same two reindeer that were over here?
Possibly.
Same people, all right? Same people, okay.
I have one more.
Go ahead.
I forgot one more thing. The Chamber held their 60th anniversary a couple of weeks, Mondays ago, but the main thing I wanted to talk about is they launched their website, and it's eastchestertuckahoechamberofcommerce.com, I think. Anyway, there's a link from our page to their page, so please visit the page. They've worked hard on it, and it looks great.
Yes, I, it's good that we brought up the, that, because it was, it was a good evening. I got stopped in at the end, I had something that I had to take care of earlier than that. But I don't know what they were thinking, they had their event in Yonkers. So the Chamber of Commerce better stop paying a little more attention to where they're having their restaurant dinners, otherwise there'd be, there'd be big trouble. With, without anything else here, then, that's all I have. This would be an opportunity, then, for the public to address the board. Does anybody from the public have anything they'd like to address the board on? The treasurer can sit and wait while the public has something to say. I forget always, though, that he is part of the public, too. He's a resident as well.
Good evening. My name is Loretta Dalton, and I live in Eastchester, so I am asking this board for permission to address you.
Absolutely.
I know this village well. My family arrived here in 1896, and so I'm a longtime resident, ex-resident, former, you know, and concerned citizen of the community. I've worked hard to preserve and respect the history that is here. I have been before the town board with the same issue that I'm about to address you, and they have been receptive to my idea to respect the history here, and I know you will, and I'm going to appeal, that you also consider a legislation to your zoning code to assist your planning board in its site plan approvals, that in the future, as we just had a terrible last minute, like an 11 o'clock or 11th hour rescue of some Tuckahoe marble from a construction site on Marble Dale and Fisher. It was a harrowing experience to know that this was coming down, and it had nowhere to go, and I spent the best part of one night calling every phone number in town and the county that I could find, and fortunately, everyone stepped up to the place.
We were, we were right there. We were right there with you, with your concern, yes.
And we have preserved that. It has now remained in the town, the village, and it is secure. What I am proposing is that the kind of legislation that you try to, or will consider adopting, is that in no way would this hinder or prevent a developer from a project. That is not what this is. We're not preserving buildings or preventing that. What we're, I am seeking, and the town is receptive to, is the preservation of the marble that will be destroyed or taken down as part of a project. If, for some reason, a lot of people don't know they have marble homes, it's an interesting thing. Most people don't even know that their foundations are made from Tuckahoe marble. It's surprising, but particularly in the Jackson Avenue, Highland Avenue, New Street, Ridge Street, plenty of Marble Dale Road, all through the village here. Many, many of the foundations are of marble. And we're just saying that, and we have an Eagle Scout, by the way, who is willing to take on this project as part of his accomplishment for a badge, and he is going to do a lot of investigation, help to make sure that we follow the procedures and do a lot of research, and in order that this become a part of the zoning code for the town of Eastchester. And I'm hoping that Tuckahoe also will consider looking at that, so that this historic marble, that, that's what this community is. It's the history of marble right here. And that you look at least to keep whatever you have within the confines of the village or the town, so long it just doesn't leave our borders, that's all it is, because this was destined for a dump site, this project, and the thought of it was curdling my blood. I just couldn't think of that. So I'd like you to consider that, and I'd like it to be a part of, a tool that you give to your planning board in site plan approval, that if you make it a part of your zoning code, there will be no question that if a developer comes in front of them, and they must tear down in order to develop the property, that they do either use the marble on the property in the wall or something, or at least find- the marble on the property in the wall or something, or at least find, um, um, a, a storage facility for it so that you can maintain to keep that marble. I know, uh, former Mayor White, at one point, took some of it and continued a wall that is, um, at the monument at Midland and, um, Main. And, uh, so I'm sure you, with a little creativity around different properties in, in the village, you might find some space to store this, and hopefully, it will be something you will consider. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Okay. Loretta, can I ask a question? Um, the, the Eagle Scout, what, what is his main goal?
He is, um, he was just so excited when he heard about this, it, it fit right into the idea that he was, he had to write his, um, and create the job that they do for Eagle Scout badge-
Right.
-to get to the next level, whatever that is. He wants to actually get involved in coming before the village boards, Bronxville included, town board, and, um, trying to help, uh, assist in writing this legislation, yes.
Now, is there a way to identify, or are the buildings identified that have, that are made of Tocco marble in the village?
Well, we have, uh, almost an expert sitting to your left, and, um-
Do you know, do you know all of them?
No, no.
It can easily-
I, the only, somebody told me how to, how to, uh, see what Tocco marble looks like, and it's different than all the other marble, it's really different.
And it doesn't look, uh, like a shiny marble that you think of as a counter, just so that everybody understands that. Tocco marble is really one of the raw stones.
Right.
And it ta, it would take a great deal of polishing to, to bring it up to, it's to a high level.
Well, some of these homes have been here so long that the marble is dirty. If you go down Glen Road on that last house on the left, which has gotta go sooner or later, that's all marble. But it's been there for so long, it's dark, it looks black, it's looked very bad.
It's the, it is our house.
But originally, when it went in, when it went in, most likely, it was clean and looking, whatever. I'm looking for stones myself. I found a, I found a man with stones in the back of his house, but I can't get them out of them. But we have large stones that the Simunera family are holding for us, and we have small stones. Now you say, you talk about taking down a building with marble. Why don't we have them, or whoever, utilize most of the stones? Because you, you can't get 4,000 cubic feet of, of stones, where are we gonna put all this stuff?
Well, for the most part, yes, we, that is one of the criteria that they try to-
Incorporate it into the project.
Incorporate it into the project with a wall, as I was saying, up within the property. Use it, recycle this material somehow. And in the event that, um, a developer just can't use all of it, that at least we find another use for it in another place. Right now, Sheila Markcott has a whole bunch of them in her dishwasher, she's, you know-
It's, uh, it's very difficult.
It's how we go, you know? You do what you have to do. So, um, I would like-
My father would appreciate that, though.
Exactly. So, uh, Tocco marble is, it's so important-
Maybe we can make some, maybe we can make some kind of resolution here about when somebody takes down their home and there's Tocco marble there, it can be proven, I know six people that know Tocco marble, what it looks like.
Mm-hmm. And Eastchester Historical Society can help you with it.
Well, I think that that's, I think trustee Zaki, I think that that's a, that's a great idea. I think we can absolutely explore whether, um, we can put a resolution forward. I, I appreciate-
Maybe they can reuse it, that would be the-
Recycle-
Yeah, I think, I, today I was on the phone even with the building inspector, the Marble Hotel building that's on Main Street, the marble fence, uh, the marble wall that's in front was obviously hit by one of the front loaders or the rear loaders coming out, and it cracked it significantly, where it's almost laying down there. So I called Bill because I wanted to make sure that somebody wasn't gonna come to us and say, "Oh, well, it's half-knock down, I'm gonna take the rest of it down." And the building inspector assured me that it's on the site plan as having to be, you know, be there. So I said, "Just go by and remind them that I'm gonna need them to repair it," as opposed to tearing it down from the, from the front of that building.
And it is, it is keeping it pure, um, and true. And, and the New York Life Building some years ago, when they came to town looking to restore their building, they paid very dearly for a hunk of this marble in order that they actually restore it historically correct. So it is, uh, it can be used in many ways, and, and if that resource leaves this area, we can never repair any of our buildings. Uh, our churches that are done, are made of this marble, um, we have so many historic buildings around the country, not just in this area, but around the country, that may at some time in the future need some of this for their restoration project.
I think that's an, an absolutely great project. I hope that trustee Zaki, you're really gonna be on this?
Did you notice by any chance-
He's not even answering me. He's gonna, he's gonna reminisce about marble with you for a moment.
The Kentser Creek Dam, did you ever notice the Kentser Creek Dam? They cleaned that whole dam. Somehow they cleaned it. And I went by and I said, "Oh my God, how bright this is." And I figured it out, I looked over on the side where they weren't finished yet. But they also have a marble quarry up on, up on Cranberry Lane.
We're very fortunate in this area, we really are. Eastchester, uh, by the way, just, if it might help you to recommend this, uh, has been involved in the past few years in inventory, uh, those older homes in those areas that I mentioned to you. We all know some of the older homes in the area, and particularly in my neighborhood, um, there are many homes, and what we've done is taken pictures, gone back to the, and it's volunteer, anybody who can do this for an hour or two, it, just take a house, if you see a house, someone, you know, who wants to volunteer their time, they look at it, they go back to the assessor's office, look at the records, see how old that house is, if they suspect it is, uh, some sort of significant period in time, or it may have some Tocco marble, it comes to the, um, the Historical Society and that gets looked at. So that's another way that we can monitor-
What year house would you suspect would have in the village?
In the village? How many?
What year?
Oh.
Uh, how old? 1900?
Um, well, the active quarries were the eight, the late 1800s, really active. It, it did overlap into, um, nineteen, up to 1909, somewhere in there, but that-
Where'd you learn all that?
Where did I learn all that?
So, so late 1800s to about 1909, you might have foundations or the houses south.
Absolutely, absolutely. It was, it was a very, uh, cost-effective way for people to build their homes in this area, so they just took advantage of the zone that was here. Bronxville, you can drive through Bronxville, and, and I don't know if you've noticed, a lot of them came down in Eastchester unfortunately, but Bronxville has maintained their, um, neighborhood identity columns, their pillars-
Yes.
-as you enter different communities. Some of those are Tocco marble, and-
We have a couple of them in our yard as well.
Okay.
We have been diligent on this.
Preserving and-
And, and preserving, and with, so trustee Zaki, you never answered my question before. You're, you're gonna move forward with the resolution, you're gonna work with-
Yeah, we should have a resolution on this here.
You're gonna work with, uh, with Ms. Dalton and, and the rest of the people? Okay, then we'll look forward to, to him-
Looking to it and at least consider some-
Putting forward something for us, absolutely.
Uh, that you might want to adopt something that, because even if it means, and I know this is not a very nice word, but moratorium on a tear down or taking away until you do get, if you do start to do something, so that you don't lose it in the meantime, you know?
I think that we've shown you that we're not, we're not gonna let it slip through the crack anyway. We, we are, we are on it, and we believe too, I think all of us share that belief, that we understand that Tocco has such a relationship with marble, and we are always looking to make sure that it's incorporated into what's going on. We were concerned also when the building came down on, uh, Fisher and Marble Dale, and that's why we acted as quickly as we did as well. So we're, we're on this with you then. Trustee Zaki will be, we'll be looking forward to him bringing something forward on, on this.
We also just made sure, and if you get a chance, go down to Ford Union, we, um, we had the painting restored of the marble, that depicted the marble quarry, the big beautiful painting.
Mm-hmm.
And it's so much brighter, we, and it's framed, and, um, Tocco Centennial helped to pay for that, which was great. And, uh, take a look, it really looked good.
Yeah. We had fun on that Tocco Centennial.
Yes, Loretta was on the Tocco Centennial.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, I appreciate it, and I wish you all the best of health in the new year and a very joyous season. Thank you.
Thank you. Are you village resident purpura or village treasurer purpura that's looking to come to the microphone?
Village treasurer.
Village treasurer. I think your time has passed, but come on up.
Just, just real quick, I just wanted to add to an earlier comment by trustee Eklund, thanking me for my work here. I've made it through six months, actually seven right now, but I wanted to thank everybody here for working with me, uh, particularly some of the employees that I work with on a day-to-day basis that are here. And, uh, I also wanted to commend my deputy treasurer, Stella Marchionne, who, six months prior, really didn't have a treasurer to work with, and, uh, she's been, uh, very helpful and very diligent in her work, uh, serving the, the village, uh, putting, putting in time and putting in her efforts and, uh, just doing a great job. I just wanted to say that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else in the public? Okay, we have something that trustee Eklund reminded me, tomorrow's Fire Election Day.
Yes.
That's from 4:00 PM to 9:00 PM, and I think it's at your-
At the community center.
The community center only now, right. So for everybody in the village, community center, 4:00 PM to 9:00 PM, Fire old commissioner elections, Fire Board elections, and, um, do we have anything from the attorney's, uh, office? No?
Uh, no, Mayor, everything that we, uh-
We addressed it through the, through the evening, I know that. I just needed to make sure there wasn't something else that was on there. Uh, that being, uh, the case that there's nothing, I'd, I'd certainly like to take a moment to say, uh, happy holidays, Merry Christmas to everybody, Happy New Year, we'll be back in January, I hope, uh, peace to all of you, and I hope everybody's safe. I think the board probably would like to say something along those kind of lines.
Happy holidays.
Merry Christmas and happy holidays.
Yes, safe holidays, definitely.
Then, uh, I have a motion to adjourn?
No move.
A second?
Second.
Thank you, good night. All right, we're ready, we have to have a motion to reopen the meeting.
No move.
Second.
Second.
Discussion.
Trustee Eklund?
In favor?
Trustee Gorman?
In favor.
Trustee Zaki?
In favor.
In favor, resolution scheduling the public hearing concerning the Emergency Tenant Protection Act to be held at the village board's January 14th meeting. Right, that's a resolution scheduling the public hearing for the January 14th, 2008, 8:00. We just needed, we need, made sure we get that on the agenda for Mr. Shirely there. Uh, do I have a motion?
No move.
Second.
Second.
Roll call.
Trustee Eklund?
In favor?
Trustee Gorman? In favor.
Trustee Zaki?
Mayor Spal.
In favor. Also now, we'll just adjourn it again, do I have a motion?
No move.
And a second.
Second.
For the second time, good night.